Councilmember John Faust, can you verify that we have a call?
Yes, Senator Mayor.
Call me again and I have to clear this meeting note. And we're going to ask our developmental director, Mr. Lonnie Waters, if you would please. You are in the case.
Lord, we thank you for everyone that's represented here tonight. Lord, we asked you to watch over everyone as they conduct the business for the city of Jasper. Lord, we ask you to watch over all of our military. The things that's going on in this world, there are families that they're called out to be in an absence with. Lord, we ask you to be with them. Lord, we ask you to be with their first responders, law enforcement, ambulance, fire, and all these favors in your name. Amen.
Doctor, please, Doctor, if you please leave the office, please.
Yes, sir. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counsel, if you have the agenda in front of you, are there any discussions about the agenda, sir?
Mayor, if I could, I'd like to consider adding a report from the pro park committee under committee reports anywhere would be fine, but we would like to be able to consider the team that the committee has put together to discuss the park.
You would do that? Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, also under new business item number one, there's a procedural issue with that. I'd like to consider tabling that.
I'm aware of that procedural issue. Thank you, sir. You entertain a motion at this time to table item number one for the various of the zoning ordinance for thirty-six twenty-two camp road.
So moved.
And second, please.
Second.
And for the discussion by council, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And that motion is tabled. Counsel, with that exception, you have your agenda in front of you, and I entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as modified.
Salute.
In a second, please.
Second.
Motion in a second. Can you further discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, and motion carries. Counsel, you also have the approved minutes from the February the seventh, twenty-twenty-two Record Council Meeting, and I would entertain a motion that we accept those minutes as approved.
Salute.
In a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same, motion carries. Counsel, I'd like at this time to have our internal voice. Chief, Mr. Matt Dawkins, if you would come forward, please. Good evening.
Good evening, Matt. State what you're going to do, as so that the audience will know.
All right. I want to do an employee commendation tonight. Probably the first time we've done one, I do believe, might be ever. Lieutenant Chad Childers, if you would step up here. So I'm going to read this to you, his letter, and I'll read it in front of y'all so y'all can know what's going on. "I'm writing this letter on behalf of Chad Childers, Lieutenant with the Jasper Police Department." Lieutenant Childers has been a police officer for fifteen years, fourteen years with the police department. He has worked in the Uniform Patrol Division and has worked his way through the ranks. If I were to describe Lieutenant Childers in three words, that would be dependable, considerate, and compassionate. On February eleventh, twenty-twenty, Lieutenant Chad Childers responded to a motor vehicle crash involving a motor vehicle and a building. Upon arrival to the scene, Lieutenant Childers observed a Chevrolet Tahoe inside the business. Fortunately, no one was hurt during this accident, but Lieutenant Childers learned something about the driver of the Tahoe. After speaking with the elderly driver, he learned the man was coming to the store to get a couple of groceries. The elderly man informed Lieutenant Childers that he lived on a fixed income, and all he wanted to do was buy some bologna and bread with little money he had. The man was very upset due to what just happened or took place. Lieutenant Childers escorted the elderly man to his residence, which is here in Jasper. After he left the residence, he took it upon himself, he went to Walmart and bought some groceries, which included bologna and bread with his own money. It's not as the city, this is not in it, but he didn't ask the city to pay him back to do it on his own account. He returned to the elderly man's apartment where he delivered the groceries. Chad Childers' actions speaks volumes to his character, having compassion, commitment to help ease the burden of someone he knew was in need and had never met. This type of action has a huge impact on the citizens within the city of Jasper. Your selfless act is the epitome of human kindness and example for the rest of us. This letter is to commend Lieutenant Childers publicly and formally for your commitment and dedication to the public service. Thank you, sir.
We'll come around somewhere this evening. That's okay.
You want to have the demand of that.
Yeah, we'll do it up here.
Do you want us to come down? Let's do this, if you will, counsel. Come down, look at the sort of good race, and I saw him getting the curfews on the... Ah!
I'm showing this best side. Alcohol.
So moved. Come on.
Go.
Thank you.
Sonja, you're supposed to be in there watching.
You're probably right. If you know that, that's fine.
Under old business item one, discussion of alcohol ordinance revision. We'll ask our city manager, Sonja James, to talk to us about this.
Let me take that.
Discussion of alcohol ordinance.
Good. Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. I just wanted to update you very briefly. Mine is not going to be as celebratory as Chief Dawkins' was. Mine's concerning the alcohol ordinance. I have worked through most of the ordinance that we want to change to be a little more flexible with our incoming development and our future plans for the central business district. There are two items that I have not completed on that in those areas, and that has to do with our assisted living homes and how to deal with alcohol sales within those. I've reached out to other localities to get a guidance on how they do that, and also I'm going to reach out to Mr. Siphon to help get a little guidance in how he deals with that in his other localities. So it is almost complete. As soon as I finish those final two items, I'll be sending it to City Council for their review, and if there are no objections there, then I'll be sending it to Mr. Siphon for legal review. So that's where we are on the update of the alcohol ordinance. Any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
Item two, consideration approval of drawings for CPL, that will be Clark Patterson, Leo Engineering Firm for downtown renovation of restrooms, and we will also have Sonja to bring this to us.
Yes, sir. As you noted in your weekly report, I did make a telephone call to the designer. I talked through some concerns that City Council had regarding the safety of the restrooms. He had indicated that they considered those in the design phase, and they have some mechanisms by which to alleviate any security issues surrounding those. He seemed to think that, you know, he had taken everything into consideration of what City Council wanted, so I made those points to you in your weekly report regarding the entrance and cameras and things like that. So, you know, unless there are any other directives from City Council, then I guess we're at the point where y'all would discuss whether or not you want to approve this design or reach back out to the designer and have them engineer something else, so.
Counsel, discussion?
So what was the process by which they initially got direction from the city as to what they came up with? Do you know?
Well, that kind of predates me. I wasn't here when you initially reached out to them and asked them for what their drawings were, although the former city manager took that on, so I can't answer...
That's what I remember.
Yeah, I can't answer or articulate what, I can't articulate what that message to them was at that point, so.
So just from my perspective, the last directive that we had, or conversations that we had had about this building, which were quite some time ago, this isn't exactly what we had discussed with Mr. Dawkins at that time. We had talked about some other opportunities or options. And so that gives me a little bit of concern that if one, this design has come to us, and it's even more concerning, quite honestly, that they're resistant to listen to our input. I did review your comments, and I don't entirely agree that they've addressed the safety issues. I think from the design perspective, what we had talked about was something that mirrored our historical downtown area. I don't agree that this building necessarily does that. And with respect to the signage, our recently passed sign ordinance actually internally lit signs for buildings in the downtown business district. This does not meet that requirement, and as we all know, interestingly enough, it's CPL that designed it, helped us with that sign ordinance, so they've given us a design that doesn't meet the ordinance that they drafted for, so. And all that went through a public hearing process and so forth and so on. I don't know what the answer is as far as moving forward, but...
Well, my recommendation would be to, if you're not comfortable with the design as presented, then you vote the current design down, and that allows me to go back to CPL and say, try again. So, but at this point, in their minds, the design is complete based on whatever language was articulated at the time and that I was not party to, so.
Could we table this and maybe have a discussion at a workshop as to, maybe that way it gives everybody some time to what they want, and let's go start back with what we want. Because you were not ready to that.
I think if you're not ready to approve it, sign it to a committee. We have a streets committee, and I would think this is a great opportunity.
Absolutely, and I would go a step further to say, if you're going to have a work session to hash it all out and discuss it, that we actually at least minimal have the designer from CPL at least zoom in, if not be present. So that way you can articulate your concerns, taking on regarding the design features and the safety of the restroom, so.
Lieutenant, both of this time to table list until our next meeting or sooner if possible.
Yes, sir.
Salute.
In a second.
Second.
Motion in a second to table until our next meeting or sooner. All in favor, please say aye.
Discussion, sir?
Any discussion?
I want to move this project along faster than anybody does. Me and Jim actually took it upon ourselves to stand before our former DDA in a very tumultuous time to help resolve this situation, and it seems like, I know the public is anxious about these restrooms, I think the council is, it seems to be that the consultant is the one that's slowing things down, so if what we're doing tonight will expedite them, then I'm all for it.
Yeah, and I'm not sure that, I don't think any of us know the communication that happened between them and Brandon.
Right.
So I would be careful in saying that CPL isn't doing what we ask. I don't know what we asked for.
Just want to say that maybe we can have that discussion.
That can be handled fairly quickly if we get it into a committee and sit down with somebody, one of the architects, and get it fixed.
I will schedule a meeting and have the architect attend that meeting for discussion. That's it.
Any further discussion?
Yes, sir.
All in favor, table it, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. And the motion is taken. Item three is consideration approval of conceptual drawings from our engineer for fire station upgrades. Sonja, we will let you bring this again.
Absolutely. Most of you received in your packet a preliminary design of what staff thought that that, what particular design was going to look like. After your packet was delivered, we then received the final architectural plans of that facility, and I sent those to you via your weekly report. I sent the colored version of what that looks like in your weekly report. So I think it's a beautiful document, I mean, a beautiful building. There are some things that we will order to go onto the building as discussed in your weekly report, and so staff recommends adopting this particular drawing, architect drawing.
And I will add, this has been through the Public Safety Committee, and Kirk, your question about the window, you happy with that? Okay. So I think the recommendation from Public Safety is that this be approved to move on for our actual construction documents, and it has also been passed through the fire department, down through the lieutenant's, Vaughn's, and others. So I think this one's ready.
Any further discussion from council?
I guess I'll make that a motion. Second, it be approved.
We have a motion in a second to approve the conceptual drawings for our fire station upgrades. Any further discussion by council?
So there were some updates on the design. We have, I think, an older version in our packet. There were some updates?
There were updates, and they came after your packet was already adopted, so I included those in your weekly report.
And I didn't see that.
Yes.
It's just a question of curiosity, I guess. The material on the front seemed to be wood or brick, or is that yet to be determined?
Yet to be determined.
Yeah, I think that would be...
All we're doing is releasing this so they can start doing construction, drawings and specs to be approved.
Yes, sir.
Very, very nice looking.
Yes, sir.
Vaughn, all your guys were happy with this?
Yes, ma'am. We got the floor plan, the reasonable floor plan, passed it through the lieutenants, the lieutenants actually passed it around to some of the senior fire, and everybody was well pleased with it.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. And motion carries, including Kirk. Under new business, we go to item two, item one is tabled. Consideration approval to issue alcohol license for Sharp Top Distilling Company LLC. Lindsey Williams, if you would please bring this to us.
Good evening, Mayor and council. As you recall, last month, we asked to begin advertising for Sharp Top Distilling Company LLC. They're going to be located at 104 North Main Street, Suite A. They would like to obtain a distillery with cocktail and alcohol license. They haven't met all the requirements. They did their advertising, we would just ask if you could please approve their license for tonight.
Motion that we approve their license.
We have a motion to approve the license, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Kirk, go to yes. And you're going to get your license, Jason.
Thank you.
Good to see you today.
Welcome to Jasper.
Glad to come.
Thank you. Item three is consideration approval to issue an alcohol license to Culinary Gateway LLC, and Lindsey, we're going to let you bring this again. This is your item?
No, no, just a few things. Like last month, again, we asked for Culinary Gateway LLC, located at 345 North Main Street, to obtain a retail consumption license for beer and wine. And they've met all the requirements and all the advertising requirements, we're just asking for approval to issue their license.
Make a motion that we approve their license.
Have a motion to approve for Culinary Gateway LLC, their alcohol license? Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion in a second, any discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, and the motion carries, and Kirk, go to yes. Item four, and I think this is something near and dear to everyone's heart. It's good to see this on our agenda. Very happy. Consideration approval to issue an alcohol license for Woodbridge Tavern LLC. Lindsey?
So, like last month, we asked for Woodbridge Tavern LLC, located at 44 Chambers Street, to obtain a retail consumption license for beer, wine, and distilled spirits. They've met all the advertising requirements and all other requirements, we're just asking for approval to issue their license.
Counsel, entertain a motion to approve, approve this end license.
Make a motion that we approve the license to Woodbridge Tavern LLC.
In a second, please.
Second.
Discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, the motion carries, unanimous, sir. Item five, consideration approval of events for North Georgia Family Partners in June, I think, June X. You look like you're down for several of these things.
Yes, so we have three events that we want to get approval for, long table on Main, which is in front of 61 Main for this year. September the tenth, and like I said, our caterer would like a rain date as opposed to moving the location, which would be the seventeenth of September. We also, in June, we do a superhero day at Lee Newton Park, so that's where we invite all the first responders to come meet our families, in hopes that maybe the kids, if they ever have to have the police or fire department or EMC show up at their house, maybe they're not so afraid of them, you know, because they've already met them. And then last, we do Jeep Fest camping at Lee Newton Park there in Jeep Fest, and we would like to reserve the park for that.
All right, so tell me again, on the long table on Main, what day is it?
It's September tenth.
September the tenth, and Terry, I'm going to ask you if everything is okay, and what about the date of June the sixteenth?
It is.
And how about August the thirty-first? To September the fifth? Is that date open for them to do?
Oh, yes, it is, yes.
Yes, it is, okay. In that case, counsel, I entertain a motion that we approve these events for North Georgia Family Partners on these specific dates.
Salute.
In a second, please.
Second.
Any further discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries, unanimous, sir. Item six is consideration approval of family carnival at Lee Newton Park, and we're going to ask Leslie Long, is Leslie Long in the audience, please?
Hi.
Step forward if you will and tell us about your event.
My name is Leslie Long, I'm the Development Communications Manager at Good Samaritan Health and Wellness Center. This year, we're celebrating our twentieth anniversary, and so we wanted to do something for the community just to thank our patients and those who've supported us for the last twenty years. So we were hoping to have a family event, and we're hoping to use Lee Newton Park. We have like a carnival theme with carnival games, bounce houses, popcorn, cotton candy, a free event for families. We also have considered having food trucks available if people would like to purchase lunch, but just have a, just a way for us to give back to our community that's given so much to us for the last twenty years. We also want to open it up for other nonprofits to be able to have a table so that the families can see what's available to them in this county in ways that we can help them.
So will you charge those nonprofits to have a table there, or is that your intention, or?
Yes, we were going to, we were going to charge, but just like a ten dollar fee, just to kind of help, because we're going to provide the candy, the gifts, any prizes that are given for those carnival games, Good Samaritan will provide those, so we're just asking a ten dollar fee just to kind of help with that cost.
Okay, and Terry, the date of that is open?
Yes.
Eleven.
What date was that?
June eleventh.
June, can be eleven. Counsel, I entertain a motion to approve this family gathering, our family carnival at Lee Newton Park.
Salute.
In a second, please.
Second.
Any discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Opposed, same, and this carries unanimously, thank you. Item seven is consideration approval for our downtown development authority to hold second Saturday on the month of, what month?
May, June, July, and August.
Give her a guess.
May, June, July, and August.
In fact, I got it wrong.
Did the second Saturday?
It's the second Saturday, which is May the fourteenth, June the eleventh, July the ninth, and August the thirteenth. So that will not be an issue with you, okay? So tell us about second Saturday, Jake?
Well, we've had several meetings, and we are looking at trying to provide some music in downtown area. We're trying to get with the merchants association and other individuals and associations in town and trying to get their input into this. We're trying to be objective about what we're doing, but we want to have some kind of music and entertainment on a second Saturday. It'll be a small band of two or three individuals, and right now, we're looking at everything being within side the Pickens County area. In other words, bands will be from Pickens County and so on and so forth. At one time, we were looking at something a little bit bigger than that, but now we thought we'd do this initially and see what, where this goes. We're not going to do any, initially, we're not going to do any vendors. We're going to back again, this is just, we're trying to see how we develop this program and move forward with it, but it's just something to get some activities on the second Saturday of every month for those four months. Here's some of the time.
Okay, the purpose is to bring visitors to downtown?
Absolutely.
Show them all the wonderful things that we have and let them see what our city looks like.
Exactly.
Okay, I think that's an admirable purpose. So, counsel, at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve second Saturday updates that Mr. Jack Dunn gave us.
Salute.
In a second, please.
Second.
And a motion to second, any further discussion by council?
Thank you, Alfred, your word.
Thank you, and we look forward to doing this, and hopefully we're going to benefit from this.
You're welcome, sir.
All in favor, please. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And council member Radfield, both of you. Thank you, Jake.
Yes, sir. Thanks for the opportunity.
Item eight is consideration approval of Jeanette Drive Bid Selection. Will I ask Sonya to bring this to us?
It is with great pleasure and enthusiasm that staff brings to you the final bid for the consideration of remediating and fixing Jeanette Drive so the citizens in that area can begin to use that road again. The top, the lowest bid came in at $249,000. That bid was vetted through our engineers. I sent our, the actual bid that came in, I sent it to the engineers. And included in your packet is his recommendation that we go with this company and proceed to get that fixed. We are instructed that it will take them 90 days from the signing of the contract to get that done. So if it is approved tonight, then I will go ahead and get that contract signed tomorrow. And we will try to get that remediated as soon as we can for our citizens.
Counsel, I entertain a motion to approve the bid, the winning bid for Jeanette Drive.
Salute.
In a second, please.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Kirk, I didn't see your.
He raised his hand.
How long have I been fixed, please?
Thank you, sir. The motion is carried unanimously. Item nine is dredging of Cove Creek, and we're going to ask our Director of Water and many other things, Mr. David Hall, if you're interested in this.
Evening, Mayor, Council. We're looking at getting the intake area at Cove Creek, Longfalk Creek dredged out. And we have two local companies that we reached out to to bid this project. One with actual low bid, Mudcap, actually helped us last time that we done it. He helped us sign with some of the youths that were down there. So he knows, Wayne Anderson, he knows what he's doing. So Wayne Anderson at Mudcap come in at $24,170. Stan Cove, Tim Stansels, we all know well, too. Coming in at $28,900. Tim said he was really interested in it, but he wouldn't be doing it anyway. So that's the two bids around for you. With low bid being Mudcap, a local company, at $24,160.
Okay. Counsel, this time I entertain a motion to approve this low bid.
I have a question quickly, Mayor, before the motion. We received some information from you about FEMA stopping work at the Cove. Is that related to this project or?
That actually came in through Lonnie. And I don't believe it is related to this section. Lonnie, correct me if I'm wrong.
Okay, the information we got from FEMA was that the Department of Fish and Wildlife has some extra questions before they approve the payment that we are, we have been working on from FEMA. They first said they were going to come up here this coming Friday, and the two places that they were talking to us about was Cove Creek and Pembroke Creek off Grandview. That's the only two out of the six projects we've got listed that they had a question about. Now they've called back and said they want a virtual meeting Friday, but they just had a few, from what I understand, they've just got a few questions. And Lamar from Turner City is going to be there alone with our staff in the building department.
So it's not related to this project?
It's not related to the dredging project. They just told us not to do the work down there until we had this meeting Friday.
Okay, thank you, Lonnie, sorry.
Thank you.
We will wait until we get the permit from BPD before we would let Mudcap proceed. Our engineers are working on that. That's all.
I entertain a motion this time that we accept the low bid from Mudcap for the dredging of Cove Creek.
Salute.
In a second.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. The motion carries unanimously. Item 10, consideration approval for a quote to pay jail for that drive. David, you're going to be up again on this. I've got the enclosure that says under $25,000, yet I noticed that the successful bid on this was $28,000. Was there a reason for the under $25,000 location on that?
Yes, Kevin Moss, Moss Paving, said that with the city's help, and I talked to the city manager about this the other day, with the city's help, that he would lower that to $24,995 with the city's help. He was wanting some help on the rig, digging it back out and putting the gravel back in to where he wouldn't have to foot with dump trucks and stuff like that over that week. And that's something we can do, sort of like we've done on Brick the Bridge, Mayor, you know, when you asked us to help, Stansel over there, we're going to reach out and help Kevin with some of the stuff to lower the price down to $24,995. And then the other bid from North Georgia Grading, Tim said $32,000. And then we reached out to Preston Paving and then not proceed a bid.
So the $28,000 was lower than anyone, that was our low bid, but it would further reduce it down to $24,995 if we did some hard work for him?
Yes, sir.
Very good.
David, do you have the equipment and everything you need to do that for the $3,000?
Yes, ma'am.
Counsel, this time I entertain a motion to approve the bid of $24,995 and supply the help to bring that down from $28,000 to $24,995.
Salute.
In a second, please.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion by council?
Sonya Beverly, you're comfortable with the lowering of the bid, fitting our bid procedure?
Yeah, if you'll notice, it's on the actual copy. I just missed putting it on the cover sheet.
Perfect, perfect. All right. If you're comfortable, I'll go.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. The motion carries unanimously. Item 11 is consideration approval of wet well pump. And David, we'll ask you to explain this to us.
This is a pump that actually pumps water from the pond at the wastewater plant into the inlet of the wastewater plant. Whenever we have a heavy storm or whatever, it fills the pond with rainwater or red shade water. And then we can slowly bring it into the plant from that pond with that wet well pump being set, you know, accordingly to whatever we set it at. And for this, we have received two bids, one from Silent Flat at $13,633, and one from ProTomp Solutions, which is a home of pumps, at $11,613.54.
And I'm assuming those two bids are App Staffels?
Yes, sir.
Same type of, and do we have a spare one of these?
No. Well, there's two of them in the wet well. So, I mean, this serves as, sort of like the lift stations, that you have a leak in lag, and the lag is served as your backup until you just delete and put back in. So, no, we don't have a third one. Just to replace in the second one.
Okay. Counsel, this time I entertain a motion to approve the purchase of the wet well at $11,613.
Salute.
Second. All in favor, please say aye. Wait, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. The motion carries. Thank you, David. Committee reports, Development Committee, Dr. Central.
I'd like to make a formal request. I don't have to go first every time.
Well, let's see. You're down there under A, so.
Despite our moratorium on our rezoning for residential, we continue to be very, very busy. I think we identified a few little issues procedurally with moving some of these things more than, working on those together. We're continuing to work on our rezoning ordinances with CPL, and that is making some progress. And we just continue to try to come up with better ways to be selective in the type of growth that we have. And appreciate Sonya's guidance and helping us move forward, so that's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Street and Parks Committee?
I don't have anything, basically, other than if Kim would like to tell where we are on the Doris Wigginton, because I don't want to be wrong in information. If that's. Sure, so Doris Wigginton Park Committee had approved for us to proceed with having the corridor flagging performed out there. That was actually done last week. And then Walt, with Trails Be Ready, had one of his partners come out and do the GPSing of all of the flagging work on Thursday and Friday. So they've actually completed everything out there. They're taking all of that information back now and going to develop a more detailed plan, complete with phasing, cost estimates, something that we can take to a stakeholders' meeting, which they will be hosting for us, talking with the different groups like birding groups and mountain biking groups and things like that, developing some interest in the community for volunteers, very important for trail maintenance. And then we'll be able to go to bid with Professional Trail Builders Association. Thank you, Kim.
Thank you, Kim.
You're welcome. He doesn't know.
Can we do parole now?
Okay. The committee was established, the parole park committee was established at our last meeting, and we have contacted a number of people to be part of a steering committee to look at our concept, the concept drawings that have been prepared for the park, help us prioritize, give us ideas on different elements of the park. So what I'd like to do tonight is have that steering committee announce to council and approve, if possible, way be. Team members would be myself, Dr. Proctor, Jack Dunn, Amy Leake, Marty Callahan, Cindy D'Amio, Green Sunnels, Dr. Robert Keller, Matthew Dunn, and ex officia members, Mayor Steve Lawrence and City Manager Sonia James. Again, this is a steering committee decision, actually being made by council, was pending city money, council's got to approve. But I look forward to working with this, with this committee of approved. And in fact, the members of the committee that I talked to, all of them have been talked to and have agreed to participate. Different people talk to, one of the ones I talked to were excited about it. So with the approval of this steering committee, we will be moving and hopefully bringing ideas and plans to the council, and we can start moving on the development of that area.
Counsel, this time I entertain a motion to approve the steering committee as I presented.
Salute.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion?
Only thing I'd like to add is that we actually started this planning process in 2016. We were in Savannah, we met with Court Patterson and Lee, presented our ideas. At one point down that piece, that small piece of property was planned to be a city hall, a fire station, and a police station. And with some difficulty, that was, we put the brakes on that, and now we are at to a point of not only having some planning, we have some initial funding, and so we've, we're starting to, obviously, the project's already started, but very excited about it, as are the members that I spoke to. So looking forward to it.
Any further discussion by council? Looks like a great group of people. Look forward to seeing what you come up with there. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. And the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Water wastewater, John?
Well, basically, we've been over most of the, we got the team, right here, we've got, like I said, the pavement's going to have J O light. They did get the belt press up and going, and they're very happy with the performance of the belt press. David, do you want to say anything about that?
Yeah, the guys are all excited. They, they'd like to look if we could to start all the ground beds out. Yeah, they're very excited with the belt press, and that's going to be a value to the city for many, many years.
Good deal.
And they are working out, cleaning out Long Swamp Creek, but it looks like the bell lock going, especially with all the rains.
Thank you.
Like that, we also got approval of our plans for all this water. So that's a bit, that's a neat sound.
And I'd like to remind the committee that there is a water wastewater committee meeting next Monday the 14th at 5:30 in this room.
Police and Fire, I'm going to ask Jim if you will take that, please.
Thank you for approval of the concept plans for the addition to the fire station. I will be discussing that with the architect's team, and we will be working towards construction drawings, and that's when we can come up with ideas on exterior finishes and such. So looking forward to getting that one done also.
Thank you. Financial report, Lindsey Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. So y'all have your financial report in your packet. If there's any questions, y'all can just reach out to us. Two major purchases, we did purchase this ancient belt press, so the guys are excited about that, a little purchase. And we did pay off the parole property, so that's always a positive. That's two good things in a month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Development for Lonnie Waters. This has gotten to the point where I need to run and hide every time, because there are always things coming up with development.
In the last month, we've had 14 new residential permits, eight renovations, two signed permits, 87 onsite inspections, eight zone erosion inspections. The animal control department's had 14 calls, and 75 business licenses have been processed, and 80 insurance licenses have been processed. And due to the moratorium, there are many developers out there waiting for us to lift the moratorium, and they're, they're already doing some paperwork to request when it's lifted. But we've got everybody phone hold right now, and they're understanding, and so we'll see what happens when it's lifted.
Yes, we will. Take it on. Fire reports, Scott, Steve, Brooke, I think we're going to let Vaughn do this one tonight. Come up here, Vaughn.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. First, I'd like to thank you for consideration and the approval of those drawings for a fire department. That's a much needed space, so we appreciate that. For the month of February, we ran 128 calls, no structure fires, one vehicle fired, two grass brush fires, 12 auto accidents, 103 emergency medical calls, and 10 other calls. Fire inspectors. Fire inspections office reviewed three sets of plans for construction and or renovation and conducted 22 inspections for the month of February.
Thank you, sir. Police report.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good evening, Jim. Little update, four vehicles proceeding at the dealership right now, weighing in one more, that we're gaming on.
We're getting older.
I am, too. So Jasper Police Department had your 794 calls for the month of February, which was a 16% increase from January. There were a 42 motor vehicle accidents, 179 citations written by Jasper Police Department, 154 by GSP, total of 333. Warrants issued were 29. We also had miscellaneous calls, which were up quite a bit on the alarm calls. I don't know if that was due to just weather or what, but we usually have quite a bit of alarm calls, and the majority of them are felonies, I guess you would call. Disorderly conducts, domestic calls were up a little bit as well, but other than that, we're good. Any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Counsel, this time I would entertain a motion that we go into executive session and discuss personnel. So.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion by counsel? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both saying. Motion carried unanimously.